Good evening, the time is 6:00 PM on the 24th of September. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Finance Committees of the Common Council and of the Board of Education. If you please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag. Thank you. And starting from my right to your left, round, if the council members could identify themselves for the locals. City Councilmember Doug Sutton, Mr. D.
Heather Dunn, District D Councilwoman.
Jim Frayer, Chairman Finance and Claims Committee.
Barbara Smith, Council President.
Diana Carpio, Board of Education Chair.
Mary Rilling, Mayor.
Jared Schmidt, Chief Financial Officer.
John Daswani, Chief Financial Officer, Norwalk Public Schools.
Sherry McCready-Britchett, Vice Chair, Board of Education, and also Finance here. Alexandra Estrella, Superintendent.
Good evening, we'll start off with some remarks by me and then by Superintendent Estrella. After that, we'll have presentations from the City of Norwalk in the Board of Education. And then after the operating budget public hearing, we'll move into the capital budget public hearing. And then we'll entertain questions or comments, I'm sorry, comments from the, from the public. First, I'd like to acknowledge Greg Burnett. Greg was the longtime councilperson and chairperson of the Finance Committee of the Council, who brought this process forward a few years ago, knowing that it was important for the public to have an idea or comment before the budget process really got underway. So that the people in the council, people in the Board of Education could understand what's important to the public and take that into consideration when we are moving forward with the budget process. So I want to again acknowledge Councilman Burnett. I think this is a good process, it's now part of the charter. So we'll be seeing this more and more, it will be part of the charter, hopefully. So first, as you know, we are going to be entering the budget process and we try to work together with staff and with comment from the public to try to determine what the city and the Board of Education can do together and how we can move forward and what kinds of things are prioritized. And a lot of that will come from this meeting. We just had a meeting downstairs and I know we've said this in the past. This may be a particularly difficult year, seems like we say the same thing every single year, but this is probably a little bit more so because of the uncertainties regarding federal funding that might be available, pass-through funding that might be available from the federal government to the state and then to the city. We've already lost in the city some capital fundings. And we don't know what's going to happen next. We do know that a lot of the focus at the federal level has been on healthcare and taking some of the healthcare benefits and reducing them. We don't know at what impact that's going to have on the city budget. So it's kind of a wait and see right now, based on what happens and what happens over the next couple of months or whatever as the budget process is going forward. We also know that we're in the third, third of the phase of, second, second round of the phase of the capital, I'm sorry, of the operating budget, where as you know, we had a rebuild. And based on a lot of people moving into Norwalk and the prices of homes increasing and a lot of the office space being vacant, more so than we've ever seen before, some of the burden of the tax, some of the tax burden had shifted from the commercial to the residential. Commercial still pays the greater number, but it's still, it's shifted so that they're not paying as much as they did before and residential has to pay more. So we did a phase in over the rebuild process of four-year phase in so that we can not all of a sudden impact everybody much to a great degree. So we're cautiously optimistic that we're going to be able to put together a good budget and two things that are critically important to us is providing services that the people in the City of Norwalk have come to expect. To also make sure that we provide for our young people a world-class education, also keeping in mind the impact that it has on the individual taxpayer. It's a challenge, it's probably one of the most difficult processes that we as an elected body engage in. And so we have to be very judicious, we have to be very responsible. We have to make sure that we're doing the best we possibly can while still doing the things that we need to do. But again, thank you all for being here, we appreciate it. Again, this is an opportunity for you to let us know what you believe are the critical things facing Norwalk and what you would like to see funded in our upcoming budget process. With that, I will turn the process, the floor over to Dr. Estrella.
So good evening, everyone, and thank you, Mayor, for allowing us to be part of this process and for highlighting Greg Burnett's work in this process, he is missed. On behalf of Norwalk Public Schools, I want to begin by expressing my gratitude for the ongoing collaboration with the city, with our parents and our dedicated staff. While there is always room to deepen these relationships, we continue to move forward together with a shared goal, creating a safe, supportive, and engaging place for every student to learn and for every family to feel comfortable and connected. This past year has been marked by accomplishments across our schools. Our students have shown meaningful academic growth, graduation rates have risen, reflecting the preparation our young people are gaining for college, career, and life. We are also encouraged by a measurable decrease in chronic absenteeism, evidence that more of our students feel engaged, supported, and connected to their classrooms. These are not just statistics, they are signs of strong relationships, high-quality instruction, and a culture where students feel they belong. This process is why we do this work, this process is why we do this work. Every member of our district family, from teachers and administrators to custodians and bus drivers, share in the pride of seeing our students succeed. And as we celebrate these successes, we also know that maintaining them requires consistency, stability, and care. We will continue working with the city and with partners across the community and the state to expand resources for our schools and keep students at the center of every decision. We also recognize that this budget season will bring challenges, which gives us a chance to focus our priorities and strengthen what works for students. Our top priority remains clear, protecting the programs, services, and progress that have supported our students' growth. We're not seeking to reinvent our schools, we're focused on maintaining what is working for our children and ensuring that every student continues to have the same opportunities to learn and thrive. We appreciate, we're appreciative of the city's continued support. The support allows us to move forward even when resources are tight. And it underscores that public education is a shared responsibility. And we know we cannot do this alone. Parents, community members, and civic leaders all have a vital role in shaping the future for our schools. As we move through this budget process, we are committed to transparency and genuine engagement. We have planned a administrative, excuse me, we planned a survey this upcoming October, which the feedback we gather will shape a town hall in November. That town hall will give families and community members the opportunity to share their perspectives directly and their input will help guide our budget decisions, similar to this evening's feedback as well. Together, we can ensure that Norwalk continues to be the place families choose, the place students thrive, and the place where education is deeply valued. Thank you again for your time, for being here today, for your support as we continue to do this work, and your shared commitment to our students. Only together we can continue to provide the outstanding education that our students deserve. Thank you, Mayor, for your time.
Thank you. Next, we will have comments from the CFO of the City of Norwalk and then followed by CFO of the Board of Education.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Ready, Tom?
Sure. The PowerPoint presentation I'm going to do, it's great to see, I think, based on my memory from last year, it looks like there's a lot more people here this year than there were last year and it's, it's great to see, hopefully, you know, every year the crowd will continue to grow. That's what, that's what this is for, it's for, for us to give you a little look at the, at the budget situation, but more importantly, for us to hear from you. So. All right, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna give some brief overview of what's happened in FY25 and then I'll talk about what's, what the budget process looks like going forward and then I'll hit on what we see and what we anticipate for next year for FY27, some of the, some of the challenges, some of the good things that we're anticipating. So in FY25, these are, and just, I just wanted to put a caveat out there because we haven't closed the books on FY25, so these are preliminary, any of the numbers that you hear, the details are all preliminary and they, they could change over the next month or so until we finalize the, the books. Most recently, we had a bond sale, which, and we sold $53 million of general obligation bonds, actually ended up netting to just over $50 million because we had, we had about $2.5 million in premium that we got with the sale. And the, the results of it were, were spectacular, we had 15 bids from 15 different investment bank banks. And leading up to it, almost more importantly, we had a AAA rating from both of the rating agencies that we gave presentations to. The, we, we also received a low rate based on those bids and the competitiveness of the, of the day of the sale. We had a 3.69% yield. And so that was, that was great news too, and largely based on the AAA rating that we have is very important to that. There, there were some, there was one in particular, one area of concern from the rating agencies, it wasn't enough to downgrade us or give us a negative outlook. It was, we had a clean AAA stable outlook, but they were concerned about our fund balance, in particular Moody's was concerned about it and we had a fairly lengthy conversation with them based on the balance of the fund balance now and also some of the, you know, what we anticipate, what we budgeted for drawdowns in the future. And so there was a little bit of concern and something that we're, we'll continue to keep our eye on. We are ending the year, the FY25 year with a $3.5 million deficit. Most of that is related to the timing of revenues. We did a tax sale, tax sale for delinquent taxpayers. And then a lot of that revenue came in earlier, came in the fiscal year before. Even though the sale took place in FY25, the revenues trickle in for about a year leading up to that time. And so a lot of the, a lot of the revenues actually came in '24 even though we budgeted those in '25. And then we had another development in the city where we sold a piece of property and had slated that revenue to come in, it was $3.3 million from the sale, slated that to come in in FY25, just because of the, the mechanics of putting the agreement together and some of the, the legal aspects, it took a little bit longer. So we, we have the money now, but it did not come through until FY26. So that's, that was the bulk of it, most of the, most of the deficit is due to the timing of revenues. We had a favorable variance on the spending side. And we also had a contribution to the Board of Education, kind of shortly after the, the formal budget process wrapped up, of $3.5 million in FY25. And 1.5 of that is being rolled forward to FY26. Oh, sorry, that's not, it's actually a little far away. Thank you. How's that, is that better?
Very hard.
Okay. I'll, I'll speak up, I'm soft spoken, I, I will, I'll, I'll be sure to speak up. So if we go to the, the second slide, you have the details there, most of which we, which I've covered. We did, under the taxes, interest, and liens, where you see the negative number there, that's primarily related to the tax sale and getting those revenues at a time when we didn't budget for. And then the licenses, permits, and fees, that was related to the sale of the property that I mentioned. On the spending side, we had, for the most part, positive variances within each of the departments and a lot of that's related to salaries. Go to the next slide, we did have contracts that were under negotiation for almost a year, about a year. And what we did this time, kind of learning our lesson because we were negotiating all of the contracts at once. And so there were five of them. So in, in this round, what we did, we staggered them so that police and fire will, will go out five years and the other three contracts will go out four years. So then we, we're not, in the future, we're not having to do all five contracts at the same time. The annual increases, depending on the, depending on the union and depending on the year, range between 2.5% and 3%. In, in part, we look at, we look at information that we get from the, from CCM, the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, which lets us know what's going on in the market, what, what they're seeing in contracts that are being settled. And, and so that kind of, that gives us a sense of where things are, what other towns are experiencing and what we can, you know, what we anticipate or what we could potentially do. We had an increase in the city's contribution, so this is a, a permanent thing that will happen every year from now on. Increase in the 401A program plan from 5% to 6%. We created parity in the police and fire plans, so there were really kind of two tiers to those plans where the newer employees had a lesser benefit, were getting a lesser benefit, and that started in 2012. And so there was, there had, had been concerns about that. And so we created parity there and basically brought the, the newer employees in line so that they're getting the same benefits as the, same pension benefits as the older employees. And then there were some other offsets in benefits to help make up for the additional cost of that. So it wasn't a total, you know, it, it wasn't, not all of the additional costs is being picked up by city taxpayers, some of it is being picked up by the members of the unions as well. There were some additional steps added to the contracts and the total value was about $2.5 million, a total increase for FY25. There's a lot of detail on the next few pages, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna put things into, take things into chunks just so you have a sense of how, how the budget process flows for the rest of the, the calendar year. And these, any of the dates that you see in here, the precise dates, they're, they're flexible, these are kind of tentative dates that we will firm up as we go along, but the, the timing is, is basically around the same time. For this year, it's, it's June 30th, yes, yeah. So through, up through December, most of the work that's done on the budget is done internally. It's Finance Department, we're, working with the departments and the department heads to understand their needs. Early to mid-January, we do another public hearing similar to this one, where you all will have another opportunity to come out and, and voice, voice your concerns and opinions about the budget, based on more information that will happen that. And early February, the mayor's budget proposal goes to BET and the Common Council. And then there's another hearing in February, in mid-February, and that hearing has to do specifically with the proposed budget at that time. And so every, the budget will be out there publicly, everybody will have an opportunity to see it and at that time, you'll all have an opportunity to comment on specific aspects of the budget. And so we're, as you can tell, there's, you know, there has been more emphasis and more focus on, on bringing the public into the process. The Common Council then establishes a spending limit, and so this is the spending cap that you hear discussed because at that point, the budget will go to the, to the Board of Investment and Taxation and they're required to abide by the, the spending limit, what's put into place by the Common Council. Throughout March, there are meetings with the BET, between the BET and our departments. This is a chance for, for you all and for the, the members of the BET to understand more in detail what's happening with each of the budgets, what's going on in each, each of the departments. The BET votes in April and then the final tax levy, final budget and tax levy takes place at some point before, it has to be before May 4. So that's the operating budget, the capital budget. The beginning is, is pretty much the same as the operating budget where it's the, the city finance office and the departments working together to develop their budgets through December. And then the, the process turns to be more public in mid-January. By January 30th, I submit a capital budget to the BET, the Common Council, and the planning and zoning. Planning and zoning takes a first look at the, at the capital budget. Their, the planning and zoning's role is just to look at all the elements, all the projects within the capital budget and to be able to see how it ties back to the plan of, the, the city's plan of conservation and development and whether or not all of those projects are in compliance. And so that's, that's the, that's planning and zoning commission, planning and zoning commission's responsibility and their role in the process. They also hold a, a hearing, that, it's a public hearing, so anybody is invited to that. Early March, PNZ sends the, sends the capital budget to the mayor and to the other body, other bodies, the Common Council and to the BET. And they'll include that report that I had mentioned with their, any of their comments about whether, whether or not things are in compliance with the POCD. The BET issues a statement about how much they, they think that, that the city should be, should put into the capital plan. So this, this is, this is the, the role of the BET and the capital budget. They'll do their own review and they, they'll look at everything in totality and look at our, our capacity to bond and they'll issue a statement saying what they think we should bond. It's not a binding statement, so ultimately, it's the Common Council that approves the capital budget. And so the, really the, the statement from the BET is, is a recommendation and a suggestion. During April, the Common Council reviews with the departments, the budgets, the capital budgets and their projects, and then they vote. And in their vote, they can, the Common Council has the authority to approve, reduce, or reject items, not to add additional items. And then in June is, is the formality of adopting the resolutions, Common Council adopts the resolutions. So that's in our view of the, of the process. I wanted to talk, this was a recommend, this was a recommendation from Councilmember Frayer to include in, in this presentation some highlights for all of you about the efficiency aspects that we've adopted or are in the process of adopting. And so I put together a list of some of the, some of those highlights here. We are doing an online permitting, we're in the, in the process of selecting a company right now. So that, that's going through the process, but there have been two rounds of demonstrations from a number of different companies to show their, their products, their online permitting products. And so we should be selecting a company probably within the next couple of weeks. This is not new news, but very important news, the purchasing department updated its purchasing guidelines and those guidelines were adopted by the Common Council. This keeps in, keeps in place the controls, sufficient controls of our purchasing process, but also makes the process a little bit more efficient. On the tax collection side, there's actually a, a number of things going on. The assessor is working with the firm, this has been in the news quite a bit. Over the past six to nine months, the assessor's office is working with a firm to identify motor vehicle registrations that are not registered in Norwalk but should be. And so this would identify cars that shouldn't be paying property tax here but are not. We're starting to see the results of that now and actually collect revenue on it. We're more aggressively pursuing improperly permitted and blighted properties. And we're continuing to do tax sales on a, basically in every other year basis. So we will have another one that's going to happen in July of 2026. As I mentioned that, that early on, that process will really start probably in October, November this year. And, and the blight tax, that was something new that was done and we've, we, we went through that whole process which took another two or three months to, to get through on that. And then this was the first time, first time Norwalk did it, it was the first time it's ever been done in the state. And so this was, it was kind of monumental to, to do that. With regard to this, the city's network, we are working with the state to complete our fiber optic loop and what this will do is, this will create some more reliability for us. So if there is an accident, there's a storm that takes out part of our fiber optic line, we'll still, we'll have continuity because we'll, we will have completed a whole loop in that, in that network. And so we'll continue, be able to continue operating. And so we hope to have that done based on what the state is telling us by the end of this calendar year. In cybersecurity, we, we have programs in place and put programs in place in the last couple of years in particular. And these are to monthly training for their, their videos, they look at phishing simulations and targeted follow-up training. We also do audits, different kinds of audits of our, of our information technology system. And so that's done both by the federal government and also we have firms come in and do that as well. The fire marshals consolidated, this was a, a great, efficient move. Fire marshals consolidated three part-time positions and created one, one full-time position. Well, BOE is here, you know, I think it's important to highlight some of the areas where we work together and there, there are numerous. We have city attorneys within, within the city department, within our Corporation Council that are very helpful and provide significant support to Board of Education with regard to cases against the, against the Board of Education liability cases. We, we collaborate on IT services, depending on, on the situation, pretty much anytime there's a, something going on in the realm of IT, there's conversation between our IT departments to see if there are ways that we can work together. The city's building and facilities manager and staff provides support to the BOE when it comes to school construction. We also are starting an e-budget book, and this is very recent. Uh, we also uh, are starting an E-budget book, um, and this is very recent. In in not quite at at the finish line yet, but this is something that both of us are doing. And both of us are gonna have access to both the BOE and the city. Uh, we have, we operate the same phone systems and the same E R P system. Um, the E R P system is effectively like our our accounting, purchasing uh, software system. We always, there there's, this is sort of an intangible, but also important. Uh, there's constant communication, as I mentioned before, between I T, but also on the purchasing side of things to share with each other. Uh, you know, best pack, the best practices, experiences that we've had with uh, with different activities that we're doing. And um, you know, letting each other know what we found to work best. Um, and relating that uh, between our, between our departments. There is an M O U uh, between the Board of Education and the city to utilize the parks within the city. Um, so that that's also a way that we collaborate. Uh, and we also recently completed, uh, just just finished implementing a new time and attendance system. Uh, that both are using the B O E in this in this. In addition, we had uh, with regard to our city streets, the complete streets program was adopted by the common council. Um, that's in effect now and is being implemented with every project that takes place to be sure that there's. Uh, that common standards are being followed whenever there, whenever there's. Uh, either repaving or the reconstruction of uh, an intersection or road. Uh, that it's following the standards of the uh, complete streets program. Um, also in the assessors around the uh, online field cards, we upgraded to a new product there. That's gonna allow us to uh, keep information online that you all can access, so if you're ever. Interested in looking at a property, you'll have access to the most up-to-date information about the. The assessed value of the property and and also be able to look at the uh, different drawings and sketches of the property. Last slide, uh, so we're looking ahead to F Y twenty-seven. We have kind of the typical inflation that we're keeping our eye on, and in particular, we're looking at. Some of the uh, infrastructure, materials and equipment that are uh, specific. More specific and more heavily used by municipalities, and so we're looking at at those um. At inflation related to those prod- products. Uh, as the mayor mentioned, we are going into year three of the four-year phase in of the property revaluation. One of our goals there obviously is to minimize the impact on homeowners because the, because of the uh, dynamics that the mayor mentioned. And the increase in uh, the assessment on homeowners. In the grand scheme of things and in the grand list. Um, that it's, it's going to hit homeowners harder, and so we're very cognizant of what the impact is gonna be on homeowners. Uh, employee healthcare is uh, is is always a no, no. Um, and usually we don't get the the final numbers until kind of later in the budget process, so that's something that will. We continue to keep our eye on, uh, even up to uh, the time of where. Voting starts happening on the budget and whether or not there are late changes. This during the past legislative session, um, our legislative delegation uh, worked. Diligently and was able to get for the city of Norwalk, ten million dollars a year in additional municipal aid. Uh, so that's for the for the current year for F Y twenty-six and then also for F Y twenty-seven. Uh, the mayor and I and our chief of staff, Tom Livingston, went to meet with the the office of policy and management last week. Um, because there are some some major constraints on how this money gets used, and so we need to be sure that we're. Uh, that we're spending the money properly and and in compliance with what the state law says, and so. More to come on that as far as details of how that money, uh, what what our proposal would be on how to spend that money. In the beginning of the presentation, I kind of skipped over it, but you saw some increases uh, on the revenue side related to our investment income. And and so that's cash that the city has on hand that gets invested um, with uh. Through bonds and and short-term, short-term investments only, that's all that's allowed by the state. Um, and so. Uh, because, you know, we saw rates going up, head-on up, but now we're starting to see them trend down. And so we will be watching out for that because uh, our invest, our investment income has probably peaked. And we're, we're probably going to see that income uh, begin to drop now. Uh, the other o- overarching goal that uh, they mentioned early on also uh, has to do with the fund balance and trying to minimize our drawdown. We, we did budget in the current fiscal year, a drawdown of eight million dollars. Um, we, we are, you know, trying to uh, keep an eye on and control our spending. Find other ways to generate revenues and be able to, be able to minimize the drawdown on the fund balance. And that is the end of my presentation, and again, thanks everybody for being here to, you know, great to see so many people up.
So again, Mayor Superintendent, thank you for the opportunity and thank you, members of the public, for uh, taking part. Um, in this, in this day, it's an opportunity again for us to share some of the highlights and successes, but also talk about. What we're seeing um, in the upcoming future. So what I wanted to kind of start just to give it at a glance, I'll, on behalf of North Public Schools. This is our population or student enrollment as of Ju- uh, July, no, June first. Just before we ended the year, so you could see that we ended the school year with just over eleven thousand and six hundred students. Uh, we had just a little over two thousand employees. We have a little over twelve hundred uh, new K through twelve students join the districts. Uh, we have. Yeah, twenty-one, uh, fifty, fifty-one languages spoken within our district, so we have a very, a very diverse district and we're proud. Of the diversity that we have uh, there, slide please. In terms of uh, our our staffing distribution, this is the staffing distribution in the budget that was recently approved and went into effect. Uh, July one, uh, primarily, our employees are funded either through local dollars uh, that are paid through property taxes. Or through grants that we receive from the state. So here you can see where the people live, the staffing distribution, as you would expect. A majority of our um, of our employees are at the elementary, high school and middle schools. With most being in the elementary schools because we have more elementary schools uh, than others. And then we have folks that provide instructional support. To those that work in the schools, uh, we have our facilities department, our transportation department. Uh, we talked about our digital learning, our I T, we are a one-to-one district. What that means, every single one of those eleven thousand students has a device. That they use at home and in schools, and therefore, our I T department spends most of their time supporting those individuals. Our students. Likewise, our staff also have these devices, and so we have about another three thousand devices. That are in the hands of our staff, including audiovisual equipment in all of our buildings, all of our facilities, all of our classrooms. So our I T department spends most of their time in support of our of our students. Uh, our teachers and the equipment um, in our classroom. The distribution of staffing is also similar on programs that are funded by grants. With our grant programs, most of the grants that we receive are specific uh, for intended uses. And therefore, we are limited in what we can spend uh, that money on, and so the staff. That are funded by grants um, can only be funded by those grants as the granting agency. Um, allows us to do so, so we we have some limits on those. But even in that case, you'll see again, uh, the the majority of our grant-funded positions are in support of our schools. Uh, instructional support, uh, but also they're all uh, student-facing or student-supporting uh, positions. Uh, the next slide talks about um, our cycle, our cycle is very similar. As uh, Mr. Schmidt pointed out, on on the city side, we also have a cyclical budget cycle. We typically begin now, we have actually now started looking, working with our principals in reviewing our staffing rosters. And so uh, we have a lot of movement uh, within schools, uh, we have a lot of movement specifically. With our special education uh, support staff who move and follow students where the services are needed. So each year is the first step in developing the budget. We start a thorough review of our staffing, and so we've been working with principals all of last week, all of this week. To ensure that we have the right uh, staff people identified in the right schools, providing the right services. Uh, with the appropriate certifications, and so once we complete that review, then we start putting together a pro forma budget based on. Uh, the staffing uh, individuals that we have. And in November, we start receiving budget requests from our, our school departments. In December or January, the superintendent uh, makes the recommended budget. And the Board of Ed approves that budget, and then from that point, we submit that budget to the city. And we follow the city budget processes outlined uh, by Mr. Schmidt, and so we go through all the budget hearings and the. Uh, the the meetings with the BET and presentations to finance and claims and council. So we enter to that process just as any other department of the city does, once the budget has been approved, tentatively approved. Uh, by the Board of Ed. Uh, what we do during the months of February through April, we start what we refer to as the student-based budget. Um, at this point, we begin to have an indication, by then, as you heard on the calendar, the mayor has made, uh, the mayor's recommended budget. The council has set their initial cap on the budget, so at that point, we have an understanding of what the Board of Ed has. Uh, to work with. And so at that point, we start engaging with our schools and start building school-based budgets. Among the things that we do with the schools, we start looking again at individual enrollment. Uh, for the high schools, we spend quite a bit of time working, looking at scheduling. Of electives, how many people enrolled in elective, because one of the things that we want to ensure. Is that all our students graduate with all the appropriate classes, and so we make sure that our course offerings allows us. To do that as well. Uh, with our elementary schools, we focus on the contract, uh, the contract sets limits on class sizes. And so we look at that, we look at enrollment, we look at shifted enrollment, uh, we work with our demographers to identify what those. Uh, what those enrollments look like at the schools, so that's essentially what we do during the month of um, of March. Starting in January, February through March, and by April, we reconcile the budget to tie with what uh, what the budget has been appropriated. Uh, for the Board of Ed, and so this is kind of a cyclical process, throughout this process. As Mr. Schmidt has mentioned, uh, there are opportunities for public hearings that are driven by. Either the Finance and Claims Committee, the Common Council, or the BET. Uh, but as the superintendent mentioned, uh, we also will be engaging in our own internal town halls. To just get feedback from the public on priorities, um, as the superintendent mentioned. This year, we will also be doing a parent survey to assess uh, what are the priorities from the perspective of the parents. And in November, we will share those results, um, and we'll do our best to use that information to inform. The budgets uh, that we uh, that we present. Uh, we are excited, we do have a number of notable achievements, as the superintendent began. Uh, to highlight uh, within our school districts uh, for the year that ended. Uh, we launched our portrait of a graduate, uh, this, this school year, we're focusing. On the competency of critical thinking, uh, this is ensuring that all of our children, as they go through at all levels, beginning. At the kindergarten level all the way to high school, there are elements of critical thinking that are embedded uh, in the curriculum, so that our students are ready. Uh, for the future. We are also excited about our future-ready programs, uh, our future-ready programs offer an opportunity. For students who cannot graduate the traditional path, either through family circumstances. Uh, it could be um, early pregnancy, it just could mean. Uh, some of them are working and supporting their families and therefore not able to go through the traditional um, educational. So our future-ready programs um, are tailored to allow these students to complete their high school education and also graduate. So that they can go into the community um, and be successive, and so we have had um, a good number, um, a number of our students. Graduate, uh, this is one of the factors that has led to our um, successful graduation rates as well. Uh, we actually have the traditional graduation that you, we have in June. But we also have a summer graduation for our future-ready graduates uh, through that program, and we're seeing growth and success in this program. By providing these opportunities to our students. Uh, we are very excited uh, this year, for those of you that know Dr. Lewis. He is the proud principal of Potus Ridge um, STEM Middle School. And not only was he a middle school principal of the year for the state of Connecticut. Uh, he was also the national principal of the year uh, for the entire country. So we're very excited and proud of having one of our own administrators achieve that level of recognition. Uh, but it does speak to the quality and caliber of administrators that we have um, in the district. We also have LaShante James, who's an assistant principal at Brian McMahon. She was actually nominated this year to be the assistant um, so assistant principal of the year for the state of Connecticut. And so we're also excited uh, for her as well, we also have a number of administrators that were nominated for the national recognition, but um. Uh, did did not achieve the designation, but we have quite a number of accomplished administrators and teachers in the district. Uh, that we're proud of, and and last but not least, our high school bands. Both Brian McMahon and Nora Kai this year uh, were selected to advance to the next tier. Um, of competition, and therefore, both of them were exemplary in their category. And were elevated to the next level up uh, in their competition, so we're very excited about our our high school programs. Um, and our high school bands. Uh, next, I'll talk briefly about some of our academics and then I'll I'll get to the budget, because I think it is important. To talk about the the individuals and the students we serve, uh, this is why we are here, and so this year we are very excited. Uh, of our graduation rate, um, this year's graduation rate was ninety-two point six percent. Uh, this um, is tops, uh, the state average, and as you can see, in comparison to the last four years. Is the highest rate of graduation we have had uh, in recent history, uh, so we have surpassed the state. And that ninety-two point six percent is actually the highest graduation rate. Any city school in the state um, of Connecticut, so we're, we're very excited about our students, uh, we're very excited about our educators. In the classroom uh, that have made this possible, but there were some very intentional efforts um, to achieve, to achieve that recognition. We have also seen. Some amazing achievements in our, in our performance, both in English Language Arts, in math and in science. And so this chart ranks Norwalk with the other uh, city school districts and compares us to the state. So the very first line you see on there are the state um, uh, indexes. Right below that, you'll see that where Norwalk ranks in comparison to all of the city schools, so when you compare. The year twenty twenty-five, which I highlighted, I don't know if that's yellow, my room purple. But that other column is sorted in that order, and so you could see that Norwalk ranks top in all of our city schools. And if you look at the other school districts, uh, even in prior years, in years where we were not number one, uh, we were number two. Um, we still have ways to go and we acknowledge that, that there's room to for growth. Uh, but I think this is a great achievement to celebrate uh, for our students, uh, who have able, who have been able. To make these monumental um, achievements. And then the next slide I have is a- again, looking at our English Language Arts and our math. Um, and P T A is Performance Target Achieved, um, and therefore this actually looks at growth. So when our students go through the system, they're assessed and a target for their growth is identified. Um, and so when you test them again, you test the students to see have they achieved that intended target. And therefore, this shows how Norwalk students are achieving those targets that have been identified. And compares us with with the state uh, on the same metrics, and so again, you'll see that. In English Language Arts and in math, uh, we have also uh, led in 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 our, in our city council.
No, I think you you um, highlighted those pieces as well. Uh, and how we have surpassed uh, not only our peers, but also the state in terms of growth. And that's one of the areas we always want to see uh, our students thriving, particularly because we have a number of students. Coming into our system that are not English speakers and yet are showing. and yet are showing significant progress in developing language.
And so the final slide on our, as related to students' achievement, is the superintendent mentioned, our chronic absenteeism. And so you can see that for three successive years, they've kind of ranked just opposed Norwalk and the state. The interesting thing about this chart is, and some of you may know this, that chronic absenteeism is closely tied to socioeconomic. And therefore, the more high-need student you have in your district, the higher your chronic absenteeism is likely to be. And so, for example, for Norwalk Public Schools, our high-need students hover around the seventy percent range. For the state average, the high-need students are in just below fifty percent. And therefore, as a state average, for a district like Norwalk to almost be at par with a state average with a seventy percent high-need student population really reflects on the work and the efforts that our educators have put in to bring this number down. Some of these efforts include reaching out to families, making classroom instruction enjoyable so children stay. But there's so many other factors that lead to this index. So again, we're we're very excited that our chronic absenteeism trends continue to drop. And we are almost at par in terms of rates with a state that has a much lower high-need population.
And actually doing better than the state when we look at chronic absenteeism and high.
And then finally, as you all know, our students need a great environments to learn. We are really, really happy with the partnership that we have with the city, with our state delegation. This year, we were able to to open up South Norwalk School, receiving a sixty percent reimbursement from the state. Currently, we're also building the Norwalk and P Tech High School Campus. We are getting eighty percent reimbursement for that. And so both of these are extraordinary savings for for taxpayers. And and this would obviously not happen without the collaboration of the City Council, Common Council, soon-to-be City Council, and our Norwalk delegation and and just all the staff that are involved. I think Mr. Schmidt highlighted the collaboration that exists between our facilities team to make this happen. And I wouldn't, we had a recommendation to talk about efficiency highlights, I believe Jared, thank you, you covered most of those that exist. I'm not going to to duplicate that. But specifically in our facilities, in our maintenance areas, we do a lot of that work. On our purchasing side, I work closely with the city purchasing, purchasing director, purchasing officer. I serve on her panels when she's interviewing for employees, she serves on my panels. When I'm interviewing for employees, when we go out for bids and RFPs, we serve on each other's technical committees to evaluate the RFPs. So there are quite a number of ways where the two of us collaborate. And so Jared, thank you for for highlighting those. And then finally, just looking at the budget and where we are, where we are this year. As many of you are aware, currently, we this year's budget ended with just over two hundred and thirty-three million dollars. The state allows school district each year to carry over up to two percent of any unused funds from prior years. In years where we have had federal funding that has come through, the Board of Ed has been able to carry forward some of these fundings that has allowed the Board of Ed to meet some obligations that maybe were not funded within the existing budget. We have since depleted those those carryover reserves. I believe the last chunk of it was this year. And we applied those reserves towards meeting our health insurance needs. The year that we're completing now, we will not be carrying anything over into any any reserves, just because the tightness of the year. We have seen a lot of increased special education costs. So any savings that we would have otherwise carried into next year, we actually used them this year just to address our special education need without having the need to go back to the to the city to request a special appropriation to meet some of those needs. So we were able to carefully manage our budgets internally and also meet those special education needs. Our special education this year was about one point four million dollars more than what we had budgeted. But we were able to to use those internal savings in the current year to address to address those needs. And then finally, as you know, when we approved this budget, at the very, as the cycle was described, the initial approval was just over two hundred and forty-two million. We had ongoing conversations with the city and there was an additional four and a half million dollars appropriated to the city, bringing the total board budget, sorry, to adjust over two hundred and forty-seven million. As Mr. Schmidt has mentioned, of that four and a half million, one and a half million was appropriated this year using last year's funds. But as we build and look forward to next year, our intent is to 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 continue to find those positions that were reinstated at the conclusion of last year's budget. And so we'll be incorporating those. And then finally, just looking looking ahead into following year, again, I talked about the additional four million, four and a half million that funded teaching student-facing positions. We would, we are planning on maintaining those positions. And so we will include that as part of our base budget. I mentioned special education, this continues to be a challenge, not just for Norwalk, but statewide, nationally. And therefore, we're closely monitoring those trends so that we have the right the right amount in there. This year, we entered an agreement with the city where the Board of Ed will we have a formula where the Board of Ed will resume funding of our BOE liability auto and property insurance. This is an item in prior years that has not been a part of the Board of Ed budget. But beginning with FY twenty-seven, we will begin to incorporate this in our budget. So this is something that we're also looking looking to address. And then, as Mr. Schmidt has mentioned, we are we do have a number of collective bargaining agreements that we we need to honor. We recently concluded one with our teachers' union that goes into effect the first of July of twenty twenty-six. And we have a couple of others that we're also working on. But in any event, we need to ensure that the positions that we do end up funding are funded in agreement with with the contractual agreements. And then we've had conversations about our school meal program and how can we continue to provide meals to students? And so we will continue to explore ways to do that. In in the current budget, we do have funding. We initially had funding of one point two million dollars to fund the school lunch program. That is, we concluded the budget process. We tweet our involvement in in the CEP program and we we had to phase that out to generate some savings. But we're still having ongoing conversations about how can we continue to fund to fund our school lunch programs because that is a big part of the students' education. And with that, I'll pass it back to you, man.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you for listening.
So now we will move to the public comment period. We have a lot of people, so if we ask that you would anybody else wishing to sign up, please do so. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes because we do have a lot of people. We also have some people online who will also be commenting. And if you don't get all your comments in within that three-minute period, I would encourage you, before this process gets any further, to send an email, send a letter to the members of the Board of Education, members of the Common Council, members of the BET, to kind of outline some of the, again, some of the things that you feel are most important to you as a taxpayer and the things that you'd like to see in your budget. So what we'll do, we'll ask probably the first five people that are here and then we'll try to go back and forth for a couple of comments. Oh, I'm sorry. We have, who wants to start?
Sure, I'm Nora Delgner, member of the council, not a member of the Finance Committee.
Joaquin Lopez, member of the Common Council, large and member of the Finance Committee.
Anne Winters Strand, member of the Common Council and and Finance and Claims Committee.
Yeah, so I think what would help, if you would call the first five people and they can line up so that it will save time when the speaker is finished. They don't have to call them again and have them trying to jump over people and come down. Okay, well, it will take the first five people here. Again, if you will start off by identifying yourself, your address, and hold your comments to three minutes, we would appreciate it. Thank you. And James, you'll warn people when they've got like thirty seconds left?
Hi, my name is John Levin. I live at two forty-nine Chestnut Hill Road here in Norwalk. I understand this public hearing is to invite public comment on the two thousand twenty-six to twenty-seven municipal budget. But I would like to urge our elected leaders to look at the big picture and consider the need to develop alternative revenue sources. I don't need to tell you, Norwalk relies on property taxes to fund eighty-eight percent of its budget. And three-quarters of that is borne by residential property owners. So, while Norwalk has generously hosted the Big Box Stores and many other retail establishments which the neighboring towns have declined to embrace, it's clear that residents of neighboring towns enjoy coming to Norwalk for their shopping, dining, and entertainment. And while I'm thrilled our neighbors spend money here, sadly, the sales taxes they pay in Norwalk are swallowed up entirely by our state government. Today, more than half of the states permit municipalities, counties, and regions to levy sales taxes for revenue raising. Although Alabama and Texas are among them, sadly, Connecticut is not. My daughter, for example, has been living for over a year in Cary, North Carolina, where there is a seven point two-five percent sales tax. But less than two-thirds of that goes to state coffers. Another two percent is levied by the county. And ten years ago, voters there approved another half percent sales tax solely for funding local mass transit. So if our city would like to consider ways to reduce its excessive reliance on property taxes, then I urge our elected officials, you folks, to use your influence with Norwalk's powerful legislative delegation to lift our state's state government's monopoly on this revenue source and allow cities like Norwalk to address their fiscal challenges in ways that can better meet the needs of its people. Last, different subject, I would like to add that I'm really happy that Norwalk hired an arborist last year to help our city develop and maintain its precious green spaces. I have met Sarah Cruz and I think she is smart, knowledgeable, and dedicated. Please keep her here doing what she is doing already and doing it so well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levin.
Hello, everyone. My name is Nisha Oliver and I live at thirty Volmer Avenue. I have been involved in our schools providing food security and composting education while supporting sustainability efforts within our community. Over the past seven months, Jody Trendler, our new Director of Sustainability and Resilience, has integrated into our community and set up multiple programs to save our residents and businesses thousands of dollars. She's expanding school composting to meet legislative requirements. She's guiding citywide sustainability and planning, helping to bring recognition and improve funding opportunities for Norwalk through our Sustainability Connecticut Initiative. Jody's effort in this short period of time has helped so many, including myself. This work directly benefits our community in reducing cost, improving quality of life, and positioning Norwalk as a leader in our state in sustainability. These achievements would not have been possible without the dedication and skilled leadership in this role for the city. As grant funding for this position expires, I urge the city to make the Director of Sustainability and Resilience a permanently funded role. This is a smart investment that will ensure Norwalk saves money, attract outside funding, and build a stronger, more resilient future for us all. Thank you for your time and consideration for a very critical leadership position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, Nick Thirzan, One Gene Avenue. I'm here, I feel like it's deja vu. I went through the same rounds last year. But basically, my main focus tonight is to advocate for fully funding the schools and Board of Educated Education budget. I I met at these meetings with Common Council members, PET members. You guys probably remember me saying I hit the floor on my knees, hand in hand, et cetera, et cetera, bleeding because I have an immense gratitude for the schools and and what my my children are relying upon our public schools. And I've seen incredible progress over these years, these numbers attest to it. I was at the meeting downstairs earlier and we heard some of our congressmen talking about and the treasurer of the state talking about the importance of continuity, the collaboration, a group effort. And I value everyone, like people said, from the security guard at Fox Run, Mrs. Tracy, who's phenomenal. I trust my kids and she can be pretty strict, but she does a great job to the teachers, the paras, the people in the cafeteria, Board of Education members. And I'm just hoping for not having a repeat of last year where everyone threw up their hands, we don't know what happened. Whoa, why are all these jobs getting cut? A lot of you Common Council members, you know, and some Board of Education members weren't even there on the stage when the mob of agitators came out, you know, and attacked the Board of Ed, our superintendent. And I felt that that was very unfair. I've seen the doxing online from people that are very involved in, you know, trying to politicize this whole thing. And, you know, I don't care what your politics are. I care about patriotism in our country and I feel like investing in our scholars is the ultimate patriotism. And, you know, I can't say it enough. I mean, I sincerely appreciate you guys talking about the school lunches. I've reached out to many, many people, Mr. Duff, who I know a lot of you guys are very close with. And he said there's plenty of money for that. So I'm assuming that someone will find that money. I don't know where it's coming from, but I'd love to see the kids all be able to eat, you know, those guys, if that doesn't matter to you. You obviously have never been in a classroom hungry or at a baseball game on a bench, eating sunflower seeds because you didn't have food.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Or giving half your sandwich to your friend that didn't have food. So these are things that are important. And again, I also sincerely appreciate you Board of Ed members. And we talked about continuity, we're renewing Dr. Strain's contract. I pray that you will stay with us. I know you guys have slashed the central office and done your best to keep this budget numbers down. So if no one else, I see you guys out there and I appreciate you. And Mr. Luna, thank you.
Len Moore, eight thirteen Foxborough Drive, Norwalk. I'm president of the Board of Education Coalition of Unions, and I'm speaking on that organization's behalf. That means Mary Ordin, Steve Browning, Ryan Morris, and Hope Wyatt. As we approach another year of budgets, we are requesting the following from the district. Please do not assign arbitrary dollar amounts to school administrators as their share of cuts to meet the district's budget reductions. Please do not erode programs such as the arts, the very programs that brought our Norwalk parents out in full force to reject those cuts. Please make reductions in the unaffiliated ranks since the district has a very top-heavy administration. Please make reductions in the unaffiliated ranks since the district has a very top-heavy administration. The Coalition of Unions prepared a list of positions in June of two thousand twenty-five that must be considered for elimination. The district is touting that its test scores outshine the scores of the large city districts. Honor then the teachers who did that work. That means the BOE elected officials would refuse to vote on a budget that eliminates teachers and would refuse to vote carte blanche on the district's budget. The BOE members are independent thinkers. That is what we expect. And to represent Norwalk's constituency and not banding together against uh community opinion. The district must compare our test scores to Trumbull, Fairfield, Darien, Westport, Newtons, and develop a plan and demonstrate to our families and community that our students are more than urban students in a large city. I can only speak for NHS, where only fifty percent of the juniors scored at proficiency in English on the two thousand twenty-five SAT, and only twenty-five percent scored at proficiency and above in math. We do not view Waterbury as the role model for the district. To the community, I live and pay taxes in Norwalk. Financially, it is not possible
Thirty seconds remaining.
to live above the Norwalk means. However, in this district, we can make decisions that will improve our current student outcomes within budgetary limits. We have four hundred students less than in June one, according to our September documents from the district. We do appreciate the support of the community, the parents, the elected officials, three minutes. really Bob Duff, the state delegation, all of those working to infuse cash into the district and that they continue to value and support our students. Thank you.
James, if you could give instructions to the people looking in on how they can uh register to speak so that we can see which numbers of people that want to also speak from uh on Zoom.
Mr. Todd will be the pitch in uh team person, and then we'll.
I don't know how to follow Dr. Moore. It's a tough act to follow over there. That's a great job. Uh, Drew Todd, nineteen Friendly Row, co-chair of the SGC at Norwalk High under uh the tutelage of Dr. Moore, who's made amazing strides in that school. Um, hopefully, this is my, this is my last uh school budget comments because my son is graduating this year. Um, and then the college holding starts. I made a comment back in February, and I know Mary's in the room. I'm going to reiterate my comments. Um, transparency, you guys have used those words today. We're all here together, and I and go through these this budget line by line together. Let's not hold any secrets. Let's put it out there. Let's see what the Board of Ed has. Why are we putting X amount of dollars to here, X amount of dollars a year? What is that going to cover? What is that going to bet pay? It's going to be a real, real tedious process, and especially with new Board of Ed members coming in, a new mayoral uh administration coming in. We need to see. You guys said transparency. The parents all came out last year. You guys said you're going to listen to the parents. Okay, let's listen to them. Let's show, let's put our cards on the table and see everything that's going on, and let's not hold any surprises. And this way, everybody's on the same page. The rumors don't start. The nonsense doesn't start saying, okay, here's where we go. We're going to meet with the city, and oh, here's our money, but we can go over here. Let us know what's going on. This has gotten, we've done this how many years? I think, Mr. Mayor, since you've been in office, we've been doing this. Um, it gets old. It really gets old. It gets tired. It gets tired for everybody here. But we have a chance now. You guys said you all listened. Last June was 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 rough for everybody. And yes, thank God, we got some funds, and we saved a lot of teachers. And they're good teachers in this district. Like Dr. Moore said, don't cut our teachers. They can't be cut. We need to support them. They're phenomenal. But no more games, especially on the Board of Ed side. No more games. Put up, put the cards out. Let's see what's going on. Let's make it reasonable. This is my last year. Let's do the right thing, starting and going forward, continuation. And one other thing, I'm just gonna come, one thing John Levin said about raising revenue in the city. There was a proposal to turf Broad River. Great idea, because you know why? We could have turfed it, concession, restrooms, et cetera, bringing tournaments, baseball and softball. The money that that would have brought into this city is ama- is amazing. I umpire baseball. I do tournaments all over the place. I see these towns with nice turf fields and bringing all this revenue into their city. And that's our money. I hope we don't have to send it to Harvard. It should stay right here in this city. And we have to find other ways to ra- raise money. Maybe bring back the dump pass that was, you know, for a ten dollars, I think, when I first moved up twenty years ago for two years. We have to get creative. We have to get out.
Thirty seconds remaining.
And that's all I have to say. So thank you all for what you're going to do. And like I said, this is the time to start. New administration coming in. No surprises, no gimmicks, no hiding cards on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. Um, if you'll read the next five people here, and they'll come down and line up, and James uh will do three speakers online.
Our next five are Sarah Alexander, Christina Riffel, Ken Gordon, Kevin Sun, Paul Fox.
Again, if you're on Zoom, if you want to address the panel, please raise your hand electronically. If you are joining via cell phone, press star nine to raise your hand. First one up is Daisy Sebastian.
So I, the first speaker, Daisy Sebastian.
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much for giving me a few minutes to speak. I just wanted to share that I hope when you are looking at the budget, you're thinking about all the celebrations that the city and the school district tonight and many other nights are sharing, not only with our community, but the state from our music program and our dual language program. And then the next sentence, I hear them, they're being cut. And I I really hope through this process that you are considering what we do well and how can we keep those things. We don't need to keep adding twenty different programs, seventeen different specialists. Our dual language program is being cut right now, and it is not being talked about. It was done behind our backs. The fourth and fifth grade now have three teachers instead of four. Their Spanish instruction has decreased. In sixth grade, our Spanish instruction for our dual language students has decreased every other day. And the word transparency is being used over and over and over, and I really appreciate how well tonight's meeting was communicated to families. It was communicated via email. Parents Square, I know there was an issue with the link, but that was solved very quickly. And that's an example of transparency. You all made that happen. And we really need to make sure that we are all on the same page. I think we all have the same goal of doing the best for our kids. Um, but the nonsense that happened in the spring with cutting music and tonight, what was celebrated? Our high school band programs. Why is that such a success? It's because of our incredible elementary school band. Uh, just a year or two ago, on Highlight Magazine, on the front cover, our Silvermind Dual Language student was on the cover because she is a bilingual and biliterate leader of the world. And I want that for my kids. And now, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, my instruction for my children has drastically decreased. How is a kid in an English-speaking home going to be bilateral, biliterate, and bilingual going into high school? So please, when you are looking at the budget, I really hope
Thirty seconds remaining.
Programs that have such great success, and how can we keep those? And just my last point, what Dr. Moore was saying, I know that your graphs look great, your point-two percent increases. But at the end of the day, when we have kids that are illiterate or kids that are not making benchmarks, we need to really make sure that we are having higher standards for our students because fifty percent of kids achieving success in threes and fours is is not okay in my book. Thank you for your time.
Charlotte Hootrow.
Hi, that's me. Thank you so much. Um, uh, we are new Norwalk residents. We purchased it Anderson Road back in two thousand twenty-two um on a strong basis that the arts was of importance to Norwalk. Um, but before I get started, I do want to say that um, I'm the proud parent of a kindergartner this year at Cranberry Elementary School. And while I recognize there is an extremely difficult task before you all in considering the budget, I would like to extend my sincere thanks to the mayor, the board, and everyone in attendance um on this evening for your time, your dedication, and your thoughtful considerations of the matters that shape the future of art and especially my children. When my family chose to make this community our home, one of the defining reasons was that value that was placed within the schools um on the arts and extracurriculars. Um, as someone whose own upbringing was profoundly enriched by arts education, my parents were drug addicts, and I found respite in the arts. And it is so important to me, um, knowing firsthand the lasting impact that has uh the arts in cultivating creativity, confidence, and critical thinking. It's my really and true deep hope that my daughter and all of her classmates will benefit from the same opportunities that I had, which is I, why I respectfully urge you to preserve and prioritize funding for the arts. One more comment. In just three short weeks in our time at Cranberry Elementary, so far, I have witnessed the extraordinary contributions of our Assistant Principal Chris Olson. His leadership, his presence, and his genuine care has already made a tangible difference for my child directly and for every student and family at the school. To lose such a vital role, in my view, would be a serious disservice to the foundation of excellence and support that makes Cranberry so exceptional in our community. I want to thank you all again for your time. Um, and I really hope and pray in for the seriousness with which you approach your decisions. Your commit, your commitment is deeply appreciated by the families you serve, and I hope that you find it within your hearts and mind to put arts at the forefront because it is so important for all of these young minds who enter your district. Thank you.
Tyler Fairburn.
Thank you, James, and uh thank you to everybody for giving us this opportunity tonight to uh to weigh in on the budget process this early. It's very helpful. Um, I don't have any specific uh academic or city budgetary requests or recommendations at this point. What I do have a uh a request of the schools, though, is a um is a a process point. So uh, this is something that I've requested going back to two thousand twenty-three. I've I've been met with some challenges in getting this information, but um, on page sixty-nine of the current budget book, there is a list of central office positions. Uh, they're fairly generic. Um, secretaries, other certified staff, assistant education administrators. Uh, this is the information that when I've asked for specifics over the years, I've been told um I, back in two thousand twenty-three, I was told by a member of the Board of Ed who's still serving, go look at the budget book. Where have you been? You know, have you been watching the meetings? Uh, that's a similar refrain that we heard last year when passionate parents came out in the spring. You know, the the refrain was, well, where were you in January? Where were you in February? Um, I have been involved, and I've had a a challenge getting this information. And the information I'm looking for specifically uh is the exact titles of the positions that are on page one six, or page sixty-nine, rather, of the budget book. Uh, there are about a hundred and fifty positions. Those positions are, i- it's very hard for a parent to understand what those are and how they impact our kids. Um, con- contrast that with what was shared at the SGC meeting at the Center for Gold Global Studies in the spring. Uh, there was a slide shared by the schools um for central office reorganization that had very specific position titles. Um, education administrator for school improvement, parentheses humanities, an assistant education administrator for humanities, and it's an education administrator for curricula and professional development. That's some of the things that were shared. Uh, that is the information that I think would be enormously helpful for parents to include in the budget book. That's not something you have to wait for SBB. It's not something you need to wait for the BET. If you are listing a hundred and fifty positions on that page, those should be clearly spelled out the way they were at that SGC meeting. Why is that? Because as we saw when we got to the end of the process last year, there are very specific positions that are being cut. This uh what was proposed was going to be the strings, the music, things like that. That's something. Thank you, James. I'll try to wrap it up. Um, those are things parents need to know early. We, those questions were asked at the SGC meeting in the spring. We got vague answers. We don't know. We're waiting to hear from the city. I would just ask that that information in the name of transparency be shared early so that when parents get all the emails to come out and come to the city meetings and the BET meetings and support the budget, we know what we're supporting. Because I can promise you that a hundred out of a hundred parents would rather have a nurse or a strings teacher than an assistant administrator for professional development. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Alexander, and I reside at twenty-four Friendly Road. I'm a proud parent, a proud Wolf Pit Elementary parent of a third grader and a rising kindergartner. Last budget cycle, I was one of the many community witnesses to the chaos that ensued, and I am here today to show my continued support of this community and to implore those in this chamber this evening to work together and not against each other based on individual interests. I ask that you are available to the public as your positions require. Last budget cycle, I stood in these chambers at a common council meeting in tears when the community was first informed of the impending cuts to schools, which would directly affect every enrolled student. I asked by show of hands if anyone was a parent of a child in the school system, and if those with their hands raised supported the cuts. I then publicly addressed Councilperson Ayers if she had supported the cuts and requested to meet with her to learn more about the process and understand her standpoint. She nodded her head in agreement. I emailed her office directly, and I never heard back. I followed up and never heard back. I spoke to other parents and was told, quote, "Don't bother contacting any of the council members. They don't care what we have to say, and they will never get back to you." This was just the beginning of my disappointment in my local government. I assume Councilwoman Ayers is either in attendance to here, though I don't see her, or will read the minutes, and I am still waiting her response and would still welcome her explanation to me, a concerned citizen that she took office to serve. Later in the process, there was an outpouring of local support for teachers, paras, and staff whose jobs were at risk, and we came out in droves to support them. Many people started publicly slandering you, Dr. Estraya, blaming most of the crisis on you and your leadership. I waited patiently for you to directly address some of the rumors in regards to your contract, fear-mongering towards your staff and teachers, and many decisions which were potentially leading to the budget crisis we were living in. This moment never came. Now, when you mass email the parent community, you always sign your emails in the same way, yours in partnership. Partnership. Those words are so irritating to read now whenever any of your emails come through, regardless of the content, which is usually very important. It's infuriating, in fact. What you publicly publish is partnership, equity, inclusion, but the behavior you showed us last budget cycle and specifically on the June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting was despicable.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Very transparent to this community that you brought in many people to speak on your behalf who gave their quote home address as City Hall. It was a slap in the face that the time allotted for those speaking on your behalf were given more than three minutes when we were bullied into stopping our remarks firmly at three. This is not a display of equity. It's the polar opposite. I bring up these two experiences specifically to ask you all to do better this time around. I appreciate the increased communication, as others had mentioned, about the start of this process, and hope that you all find a way to work together. Despite the rumored feuds between common counsel, the BOE, Dr. Estrayer, state, uh, Dr. Estraya, state legislatures, I implore you, if any one of you here tonight or listening on Zoom need help getting your message across or need support from this community, please be clear what the roadblocks are, and we will come out, as we did last budget.
Thirty minutes, thirty seconds.
as much as we can, if we can, because we are all being affected, and we all genuinely want to. ...as much as we can, if we can, because we are all being affected and we all genuinely want to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christina Randall. I live at 17 Hillside Place off of Taylor Ave. I'm a member of a group called Sustainable Streets. It's an advocacy group here in Norwalk, and many of us are here tonight and are going to be speaking. I just so happen to be the first, but I want to preemptively say that I second everything that they're going to say. And I support everyone here that's speaking, you know, that are making reasonable demands of our Board of Education as well and wanted to echo what the woman who had spoken about composting said about Jody... Is her last name Trendler? Yes, Jody Trendler, who's, you know, the new head of Sustainability and everything in the city. She's doing a great job. She's reached out to us as well, and so it really seems like she's putting her all into coalition building, which is something that the city needs, absolutely. So after that, I'll just read from my prepared remarks. Sustainable Streets has put together a thoughtful platform ahead of election season filled with initiatives that both build on the amazing work the city of Norwalk has already accomplished over the last few years. I'm talking about projects like the Norwalk River Valley Trail and actualizing its Complete Streets vision of safety and accessibility on all of our city streets for all of our citizens. And it proposes new ideas and concrete targets for fulfilling that mutual goal through an evolution of mode share percentages, increased bus infrastructure, and new spins on traffic calming measures. But that's all outlined in way more detail on our policy platform. One specific and personal thing I wanted to speak to this evening arose out of a Bloomberg article I'd read recently detailing how the federal government has rescinded a large number of grants designated for street safety measures, citing they viewed them as, quote, "hostile to cars." Yeah, one of the projects that was set to begin using money from one of these grants was a redesign of MLK Drive, Martin Luther King Drive down in Sono. It's my understanding that a study has already been completed and a plan already laid. It's just that the money has kind of been pulled out from under us to realize that plan. So as someone who lives in District V on Hillside, like I mentioned, off of Taylor, the wide, fast-moving lanes of MLK pose a huge obstacle to me and my neighbors enjoying everything Sono has to offer, all the restaurants and everything that we've cultivated here, or even getting to the train station safely. I feel blessed that those amenities are technically within reach, but practically speaking, it feels like a gamble every time I have to cross five busy lanes to get to the post office or the grocery store. For someone like me, youthful and spry, or so I keep telling myself, you'd assume I'd be just fine making it across in the allotted 15 seconds, but I'm afraid. And if I'm afraid enough to hesitate, I have to imagine that the elderly woman with whom my roommates and I share a duplex considers it a total nonstarter. So I would just encourage you guys to try to find the money somewhere for that particular spot because it really bisects the community and, you know, prevents kind of the Flax Hill neighborhood from reasonably being able to access what are our major amenities in this city. So, thank you.
Good evening, for the record. My name is Diane LaRocella. I live at 21 Little Fox Lane. I echo, I'm a proud member of Sustainable Streets and several other groups that you'll hear from. I really, first of all, wanted to thank the voters, this council, the mayor, and the staff for allowing a change in the charter that allowed this kind of meeting to take place. And so it's in the charter, so everyone do your homework for next year. But you could always have more than one of these meetings. It didn't specify you couldn't. But I think this is part of democracy and a way for you to get new ideas, and that's what I'm going to present in my remaining seconds and minutes. I want to say, read my comments from budget hearings passed the last five years. Both, this is prior to this kind of a meeting, but I often appear in front of financing claims of the council as well as the Board of Estimate Public Hearings and the Board of Education Public Hearings when they have them about the budget. I wanted to give you some ideas about the capital budget expenditures as well as revenues and the operating budget expenditures as well as revenues. I first want to emphasize something that is needed because of what is happening in Washington with a lot of important funding is going to be withdrawn because we are considered a blue state for the most part. And that is, there needs to be a major effort of our staff and this council and the Board of Ed to do a regional approach to purchases and projects and construction. So if you're building a school in one town, possibly you could get more bang for your buck and the money if you work with other towns who also have to hire the same kind of architects, construction people, and possibly there's a chance you could get group funding. It's been done in other states. A regional approach is also important for things such as waste management. As many of you know, I'm an environmental professional, and I have appeared before the Department of Public Works Council Committee, Finance and Claims, and others relating to trying to get a holistic approach of our waste management. That includes pulling out as much of the stuff that is recyclable, food that you can donate, and food scraps that reduce the high amount, I think it's up to 102-plus per ton of trash hauling. That has fallen, unfortunately, at times...
30 seconds remaining.
...on deaf ears. I don't appreciate that because we have a group called Norwok Zero Waste Coalition, and I myself have given for 40 years of professional time. The regional approach also should be used in the field of energy. I have been up here for years talking about changing the city's policy for clean energy. The policy currently says if it's an older building, you don't put solar on it.
30 minutes.
The thing is, you need to get a handle on your current energy costs because some of that savings in the schools with a poor policy is costing you money you could spend on teachers and books. Currently, we should be having net-zero schools, and nobody wants to really look at that. Lunda, I have to ask you again, your people are not giving you the right information, and then mayor...
3 minutes and 30 seconds.
The future mayor, you need to look at the policies for clean energy use of geothermal heat pumps, putting solar panels on the ground.
LaRocella, would you wrap it up? We have other people waiting to speak.
Certainly. And lastly, artificial turf is too expensive to our children's health, and no matter what Drew and others say, please do your homework. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Paul Fox, alone in Hanford Place. I'd like, as well as some of the previous people who have spoken, a member of Sustainable Streets in Norwalk, I'd like to speak specifically about the ways in which the city could be supporting transportation alternatives. As someone who's been attending Bike Walk Commission pretty regularly, Bike Walk Commission meetings pretty regularly for the last couple of years, one of the unfortunate patterns that I've seen emerge is that the Bike Walk Commissioner will want to do something, will need some piece of support from TMP. It will ask the TMP liaison if they can commit to it, and will hear, "We don't have the capacity to help you right now." This unfortunately really handicaps the Bike Walk Commission. As a volunteer commissioner, there's only so much that they can do without support from the city department. So I'd like to see the city adopt funding to increase the capacity of TMP specifically with regards to biking and walking and those kinds of issues. Especially because there is a real need to update the Bike Walk Master Plan that is now over 10 years old. Secondly, as Christina spoke about before me, there is a real issue now that the federal government is becoming increasingly hostile to projects that improve walkability, bikeability, and street safety. So I realize that this is a huge lift for the city, and we probably will also need support from the state, but I think that there is a real need to focus on that in the city budget because we're not going to get help from the federal government on that anymore, at least not for the next couple of years. Thirdly, I'd like to see the city adopt some dedicated funding for improving our transit infrastructure. I often hear that this is a big gap that we have downtown, that we don't have bus shelters in a lot of bus stops. And I think that in a lot of cases, the bus infrastructure doesn't really even really get considered when we're redesigning and rebuilding streets. So I'd like to see some dedicated funding for improved bus infrastructure and improved transit infrastructure in the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So James will go to the next three online, and Tom, if you'll call the next five people that are here. Deanna Hanson.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
My name is Deanna Hanson. I live at 10 Volmer Avenue. I want to start off by saying I'm glad to see everyone coming together this evening to discuss the budget process. I want to make it clear, my expectation is that Norwalk puts an emphasis on funding our schools in the coming year. I was going to first speak about the $4.5 million that Dr. Estraya mentioned, Mayor Rilling promised, was being added to the minimum budget at the last Board of Education meeting last week. But based on the presentation this evening, it looks like those funds are in fact coming to the schools, and I want to thank you. I hope that the BET, Common Council, and incoming mayor realize that our schools need to be funded, especially in the current climate where federal funding is not guaranteed and state funding is not enough to cover our diverse schools' needs. I understand that the budgeting process encompasses everything that the city needs, and in a diverse city, I know that's a lot. I know that not every current resident or the ones that we are attracting with development projects have a vested interest in our schools right now. However, schools are the bedrock of a thriving community. I hope in this coming budget season, savings need to be found in the city's budget. It is not found with the schools, but with other tertiary, nonessential line items. To lose exceptional educators when there is uncertainty if their job will be here at the end of every budget season is unnecessary. The loss of those teachers to uncertainty will counteract the gains our schools have already made. To the superintendent, I ask that you be creative with the budget that you have provided from the city, state, and federal agencies. I also ask that you work on getting the support of your unions and parents for whatever budget you plan on proposing to us. Laying out a budget where cutting student-facing positions is not going to be accepted once again. Lastly, with the lack of transparency from the Board of Education over the last year and especially last week, I encourage you and future new members to not rubber stamp just any budget that is presented to you, but instead, ask the hard questions and be transparent with union members and teachers. I want everyone here tonight to work together as a team to support our children. A thriving and stable school district is what is going to encourage new residents and current residents to stay and increase the city's tax base in years to come, and I want to be here for years to come.
Thank you. Dan Darbandy.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. Can you hear me speak? Is everybody able to hear me? Yeah, great, wonderful. Thank you. Yes, my name is Dan Darbandy. I am a resident of 20 Ambler Drive here in Norwalk. I'm also a member of Sustainable Streets, and I want to echo the many excellent comments made by my colleagues prior to me. I don't have a ton more to add. I just want to encourage the council to continue to consider funding, biking, walking, and transit infrastructure upgrades. These are essential to the health of our city, to public safety, not just for adult residents, but also the children that attend our schools. As we know, there's been a large influx of people moving to Norwalk over the past few years. Many of them have no choice but to own a car. I myself am not particularly happy that I have to own a car to get around. I try to bike walk and use public transit when possible, but you know, if we can, to go back to what my colleague Paul was saying, update the Bike Walk Master Plan, whether via hiring a consultant or, you know, ideally hiring a city staff member, a pedestrian program manager to oversee the creation and implementation of a new Bike Walk Master Plan. I think that'll go a long way towards making the city a more sustainable, a more livable place as the population continues to increase and take advantage of our many wonderful neighborhoods that already have such, you know, good vibrant street life. Would love to see more of that. So thank you for letting me speak. That's all I have to say, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Katie McFate.
Hi, my name is Katie McFate. I live at 6 Rampart Road. I have a daughter in fifth grade and a son in second grade, and we love being Norwalk parents. My daughter started in kindergarten the year of COVID, where I watched Dr. Estraya, the Board of Ed, and all of these meetings come together to figure out how to open the school safely and build confidence in the parents, and I could not have been more proud and excited in such a scary time to have my kids attend the Norwalk school system. And we're not in a pandemic right now, but we are living in a time where kids are afraid to go to schools. Families are fearful. There is food insecurity. There's a threat of immigration detention. We are a very special city with such a diverse families and students. And last year, along with all of these problems, teachers were worried about their jobs. So we are not giving the best experience or removing worries where we can remove worries. We are now paying for lunch soon. And so these are the things that I'm hoping we can resolve and look at the bigger picture of what these kids are going through, worried about their parents, worried about their food, worried about their teachers. Can we remove those? Can we work together beyond politics to find solutions to create a really safe place for them, too? Thank you.
Lisa Britton, 19 Shorefront Park. I just want to try and recap what I think I've learned here tonight because I came here to try and get caught up on where we are in terms of the budget and our activities. Before I get started on the finance stuff, I wanted to echo a little bit about what Dr. Moore said. About 15 years ago, Dr. Moore and I sat on the District Data Management Team, and I sat on that for about seven years, and our whole objective was to close the achievement gap. And we looked at test results, and it was back in the days of what we had CMTs, the Mastery Test. And data was easier to read back then because you were basically looking at our kids on grade level or not on grade level. You know, are they reading on grade level? Are they not? Are there math? And one of the things that's kind of hard with education always changing is they change the metrics, and so it's much harder to understand if kids are on grade level reading these performance indexes. I understand that there's growth. But the other, so that was one comment. The other comment I have is I am also concerned that we are comparing ourselves to a lower DURB than what Norwalk is in. Stanford and Danbury are fine, but comparing us to the Waterbury's, the New Havens, the Bridgeports, the New Brittons is a demographic reference group that is below what Norwalk has traditionally been. So my concern is that we're lowering the bar for our students, and that concerns me. Listening to the beginning of our CFO here, it seems that we're kind of already running a deficit with regard to the budget in terms of drawing from our drawdown fund. We have some structural problems. We're spending more than we bring in taxes, and we have some unknowns relative to interest rates going down, so we won't make as much revenue, and we don't know what this current administration is going to do with our federal funds. Maybe the good news is that we don't get that much from the feds. 88% of the funding for our school system comes from local property taxes. But we do need some other sources of income, and I want to thank John for bringing that up. I've, for a long time, been talking about we need to enforce bike fines, parking, cars that are driving around that aren't registered. We've talked about ECS funds where we've been underfunded. Sales tax, like I said, there's another way to perhaps structure education funding than the way we do it in the state of Connecticut. But that is something that we have to do with our state reps. We need to prioritize our spending. We do seem to be a bit top-heavy in terms of administrative spending versus the classroom. Tax abatement.
30 seconds remaining.
The biggest point that I want to make, that I have made, and I am doing a kamikaze move this year, running for... The biggest point that I want to make that I have made and I am doing a kamikaze move this year, running for Board of Ed and the uh. Council. Uh, to make a statement is that our housing policies, our education policies are not in sync. Uh, we continue to do more building. We continue to give tax abatements to developers while we continue to underfund the school system. Housing funds our school system. That is how we move forward. And so we have got to, from the council and the Board of Ed.
Three minutes.
Point the fingers anymore and say that one is not responsible for the other. So, I guess that we need to find other sources of revenue. And we need to be more responsible in terms of our housing and our uh education funding. That's all I have to say.
Good evening. My name is Angela Giraldo. And um, I'm here as a concerned parent. That next school year, those changes to the dual language program. That have been made over the past year at Silvermine will remain in place. The dual language program has been established at Silvermine for years, providing a high-quality bilingual education. I urge you to please protect our program for all grades. Currently, fourth and fifth graders are receiving a reduced version of the Spanish instruction than other grades are receiving. Despite third and fourth grade currently having the same number of enrolled students. Fourth graders receive a reduced Spanish instruction. Last year, fourth and fifth graders had the same amount of enrolled students. But only fourth graders saw a reduction in their Spanish instruction. It is not fair. That our children are not being served equitably. Although it is true that fourth and fifth graders have a stronger foundation in Spanish. Than younger students who are just beginning their dual language journey. However. Fourth and fifth grade graders are still gaining proficiency in both Spanish and English. In twenty twenty-three, departmentalization was implemented at Silvermine. However, the dual language program and departmentalization are not mutually exclusive. This middle school preparation model does not conflict with the dual language program. In the past, fifth graders have had departmentalization along with. Four sections, one hour of math and English. And a team of Spanish and an English teacher. It is possible to honor the dual program while simultaneously providing departmentalization. At the end of the day, it comes down to funding. If the school had enough funding, fourth and fifth grade could have four sections each.
Thirty seconds remaining.
And the dual program will be uninterrupted. Currently, there are seventy students in fourth grade and seventy-five in fifth. With enough funding, four sections for fifth grade could have been created, sixteen students per classroom. And four sections for fourth grade with seventeen students per classroom. Necessary funds, we need necessary funds so that Silverman can set the minimum number of students per class to fifteen.
Three minutes.
Administration at Silvermind asserts that it's their job to ensure that by the time students graduate. They're proficient in both languages. Please let's support the school intermission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Anna Tabashnik. I live at four Gilbert Street. I asked that this year you please fully fund the Board of Ed budget request. The pattern of underfunding, panic, cutting positions and then finding money has to stop. June was embarrassing. Last week was embarrassing and it all just feels. Unnecessary. Um. I support additional revenue streams to fund our schools such as sales taxes. I ask that this year you directly address the issues at Concord Magnet School regarding the lack of space. My daughter is in the bubble grade. This is the only grade that has three class sections instead of two. Um, we didn't realize they were going to be a bubble, but they are a bubble. We have been told that come sixth grade and CMS is K through eight. Come sixth grade, the school will only have physical space for us to have two classes. Um, possibly normal attrition will bring us down to two class sizes, but I doubt it because we all really love our school. And we joined it. In many cases because it is K through eight. We've also been told that separate from the bubble, the school does not have enough space, period. Some have said that the plan to put CMS into the bonus extension space was never meant to be permanent. And everybody knew. That we would quickly outgrow the space. I don't know if that is true. I I don't remember. I watched the meetings in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, but there was a fog. And if that is not true, and if there's a plan to use the space that is not being followed by the school administration. Please share that plan with us. So I ask that the Board of Ed communicate clearly with CMS parents about the space issue. And fund CMS however is needed so that we don't have to hope we win a lottery slot to stay at CMS for sixth grade. As has been suggested may happen. I also hope that you can fund continuing school breakfast and lunch for all. You all know the research on why this is key for academic success and how the costs of running means-tested programs are ultimately higher than universal support. I've seen the benefits of universal support in this area for my own child. Despite my family being privileged enough to be able to pay for school lunch if needed. Lastly, I hope the city continues to improve our enforcement of zoning and blight violations. More transparency in violation tracking and closely at improving efficiency and how staff follows up on violations. We have come a long way, but watch any citation.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Or try to report an issue and you will see that we have a very long way to go. I've watched citation hearings from other cities and this could all be done much more professionally and efficiently. Swift and predictable consequences and citations deter violations. We currently have neither. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Thomas Plight. Um, I'm also a member of Sustainable Streets Norwalk. Uh, I live at ninety-four East Ave, apartment two A. Um. So, uh, I'm just going to kind of get right into it. Uh, TMP uh is a little bit understaffed. Um, for example, uh, East Ave, right? I walked here today from my apartment, um, and it sucked. East Ave sucks. It sucks to drive on. It sucks to walk on. It sucks to bike on. We have funding for any staff study to improve that situation. They don't have the staff to carry it out. Um. They could also use a bike and pedestrian director uh for improvements and doing a new bike uh walk master plan. Um, additionally, uh, the Complete Streets Design Guide, which was released at the end of last year. Did not receive an update uh after the public comment period, uh, after myself and others put a lot of time into thoughtful comments. Um. Parking enforcement outside of downtown is something that they could also use funding for and which has potential to return revenue to the city. Um, and something that uh I would like to advocate for starting is. Uh, sort of a tactical street skate improvement program. Um, quick build, cheap builds, the kind of thing that we can throw up, study how it actually works. And get really good data on that cheaper, faster and more effectively than the conventional studies that that you would see. Um. So moving on from TMP, uh, I think that also we should be putting funding into designing and building the Sono Rail Trail. Uh, the Connecticut Ave Shared Use Path all the way to Richard's Ave. Um. The remainder of the NRT VT and as well as completing the Harbor Loop Trail. Um. Thank you for uh funding the community engagement events that we've had recently. Um. I would like to ask that we continue street activation events like the Sunday Saturday Market. Uh, and I'd also like to expand some of those events to Wall Street if we could. Um. Another thing that I think will be uh popular with people in this room is uh something called a real quiet zone. I think that the city should uh fund a study on how we can effectively and cost-effectively and efficiently. Implement a real quiet zone here in Norwalk. Uh, as a layperson, I've spent way too much time re- researching it. Uh, and I think that we can do it for about ten percent of the original quoted cost for the new cannon branch.
Thirty seconds remaining.
One percent of the seven fifteen interchange cost. Uh, it's good for public health. It's good for student achievement because of better sleep. Uh, last thing or last section, uh, the city needs to carefully consider how each of the changes and developments we make. Builds or erode our financial health. It doesn't need to be studied ad nauseam. The info is already available. Street treats, real quiet zones, well-placed and designed bike lanes in small dense commercial areas. Grow property values and increase revenue, especially increasing revenue from commercial property owners downtown. Big box stores, drive-through restaurants and excessively expensive car infrastructure bleed our city dry and the maintenance liabilities they shackle us to. Our net financial position in Norwalk is in the red by four hundred million dollars as of twenty twenty-four, the CAFR. Uh, and the overall trend is going further into the red. Finding new revenue is important, but it's also critical to ensure that the expenditures that we are making, our investments in our community, our future and our financial well-being. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Rabito. I live on Newtown Ave. Um, first, thank you for getting this public hearing together. It's a good initial step. Um, I do have some serious questions about the budget. Uh, first, special education. We were told by uh Dr. Australia that her and her cabinet that hiring more staff could bring more students back into the district. And reduce the out-of-district costs. Um, yet according to today, the expenses are still rising significantly. Uh, as Dr. Moore mentioned, these central admin positions are not what's needed for our students. We need boots on the ground. Um, unfortunately, first-year teachers' salaries are a lot cheaper than these crazy admin positions that are just. Not needed. Um, second, the four and a half million in emergency funding that saved positions last year. Uh, just placing these budgets back, placing these jobs back into the budget doesn't guarantee that they'll be maintained. So what is the actual plan to protect those roles long-term so our children don't face the same uncertainty again? This coming budget. Uh. The superintendent's contract extension. There was an agreement this issue would not be addressed until after this budget season. Yet it was rushed into the agenda at the last minute with little notice, limited information and then. Approved without transparency. Uh, that meeting was a despicable display of governance, uh, slipping through the cracks, a critical decision without any clarity or public engagement. We've been banging the same drum for years. Where is the transparency? Where is the honesty? And where is the trust? Our elected Board of Ed members are supposed to represent the best interests of the community. But instead, they have misled the state, city, the state, and most importantly, the public. To be clear, this is not about performance. Our teachers and students are working harder than ever and many of our numbers are up because of their extraordinary efforts. This is about leadership, honesty, transparency and trust that is being broken again and again. So I ask you plainly, how will you control the rising special education costs? How will you sustain the four and a half million dollars in uh positions saved last year? And how will you restore public trust after breaking it so deeply? Our students and families deserve answers. They deserve leadership that is accountable, transparent and honest. Nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, the next three people online. And Tom, if you can call. Uh, just one more universal dance.
Maria Mislinski.
Hi there, this is Maria Mislinski. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. So, uh, first I'd like to begin by thanking you for utilizing Parents Square to share the meeting information for tonight. Um, I think that tool ensures that families are informed in real time. And can participate more fully in district, in district discussions. Uh, it's refreshing to think that maybe the board and the district have heard parents in regards to improving communication. I truly hope that's the case and that it continues. Unfortunately, I'd like to also raise a concern. Recently, I saw comments on Facebook suggesting that if parents want updates and notifications about meetings. We would need to email a specific person to request being added to a certain email list. As parents, I don't think we should have to beg for basic information regarding our children's schools and staff. The district has demonstrated that it is fully capable of reaching all families. When Dr. Australia has an important announcement, the message arrives via text, email and Parents Square. I believe nobody has needed to be asked to be included in those notifications. And that same consistency should apply when it comes to public meetings, board actions and opportunities for input. I also want to express my continuing disappointment in the way the board handled the recent vote to extend Dr. Australia's contract. The way that agenda item was added, the lack of clear communication beforehand. And ultimately, the outcome of the vote all left many parents feeling sidelined and frankly, it was an embarrassment for the city of Norwalk. The process did not reflect transparency or genuine respect for community voices. A separate thought. Unrelated, but while middle school choice is a wonderful concept, I do question whether the district should be footing the bill to bust cities all over the city. The approach seems like an inefficient and expensive way to handle placement, especially when budgets are already strained. As this budget cycle moves forward, I strongly urge the district to maintain consistent use of Parents Square. And to expand opportunities for dialogue. One-way comment periods like this are valuable, but they fall short. Parents deserve real town hall-style forums where there is a back and forth conversation. Open questions and direct answers from board and council members. In closing, I look forward to what I hope will be a more integrated, transparent and student-prioritized budget cycle. One where parents feel informed, respected and actively included in shaping decisions that affect our children. Thank you.
Uh, there's only two people left on the shit signing sheet. Correct. Anybody else in the chambers would like to have an opportunity to speak. Uh, while we're getting for the next other, the other people, if you can come on down and sign up. Okay, we're ready for Andrea Jacobs.
Andrea Jacobs.
Yeah. Uh, it's not unmuted.
Andrea Jacobs, can you unmute your mic?
Hello.
They can hear you.
Hello.
Hi, we can hear you.
Could you hear me?
We can. Can you hear us?
Hello.
Yeah, we we can hear you.
I don't know what I did.
Hello, I can hear you.
James, can you work with her while we go to Lynn?
Yes. Lynn. Lynn, you have the floor. Please unmute yourself.
We may be having technical difficulties, so why don't we have the first in-chamber speaker come on down now?
Thank you so much. Um, my name is Mandy Singh. I live at seventy-three North Sierra Hill Road in Norwalk. I have lived here for sixteen years. I have three children. Um, a high schooler, a middle schooler and an elementary schooler. I have served also as the Cranberry PTO president since twenty twenty. And I also currently serve on the Cranberry SGC. Um, so first, I want to thank you all for listening to the public comments that were made back in June. From all those parents that came to support our arts program. And finding a way to fund the elementary band program. Including our amazing band teacher at Cranberry specifically. We have an amazing band teacher, Stacy Pacino. And we are so lucky to have not lost her. Um, just to give you some perspective, not only is the band program important for supporting. Future band programs like my son who plays in Nora Keisband. But it's also really important to the sense of community in the school. Um, Ms. Pacino's. Ms. Pacino's working with our music teacher, Mr. Chavez, to plan our fir-, what will be our first musical at Cranberry since pre-COVID times. And we just had a PTO meeting last week, all the parents are so excited about it. This is going to be such a great project that's going to bring us all together. The art teachers on board, you know, every grade is going to be included in some way, the parents are just so excited, and I know it's going to be such a great community building event. And I know it wouldn't happen if we'd lost Ms. Pacino. And secondly, you also managed to find a way to save our G T teacher who is, we're lucky to have full time at Cranberry, Nicole Rios. We're so lucky to have Nicole. As I said, my three, I have three kids, they have all participated in the G T program with Nicole Rios. Even though, keep in mind, even though two of my children are also in special ed, they have been identified, they're some of the few students that have been identified through the process as twice exceptional, and they've absolutely benefited from being able to not only, you know, have their special ed needs served, but to have their intellect, you know, their giftedness served by Nicole, and that wouldn't be possible if she wasn't full time. And lastly, you were able to save our assistant principal, Chris Olson.
Thirty seconds remaining.
I know his, his name came up earlier, he's amazing, he's also a huge part of the sense of community at Cranberry. So I just want you to, you know, keep those things in mind as you are planning the budget process, and hopefully, we won't have to be back here in June like last year. I think we had a great turnout tonight, I'm really proud of the community, but I, I have to acknowledge it's not as big a turnout as last June. I just want to point out that I'm confident that those parents that spoke in June continue to have the same priorities as they did in June, and so if you could keep that in mind, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We got that straight now, James?
Yes, they just need to unmute themselves. Andrea Jacobs? Andrea Jacobs, you have the floor, please unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hi, can you hear us now?
Yes.
All right. You have the floor.
Okay. My son, he goes to West Rocks, and I know he's not pertaining to what's going on now, but they have a trip coming up to go to nature's classroom, and they asked him for like a four hundred dollars. Right now, I don't really have it, I don't want him to miss the trip. Is there any way I could get some assistance? I'm going through like chemo and suffer breast cancer, it's just so much going on right now. I don't want him to miss this trip, what, what assistance is there available? If any, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Could you hear?
Sorry?
We have an address for him, so we know who can reach him.
Andrea.
And what school? West Rocks.
West Rocks. Rocks?
Are you still there?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Okay. We're still listening.
No, I was just asking if there's any funding, I know they told me I could sell some popcorn, I've been trying to sell that, I didn't get any source yet. But it's not all the money will go towards the trip, it's a four hundred dollar trip. Another needed for statement went by the twenty-six.
I just want to make a comment about the, the school, I know that the, as a teacher in Norwalk, the social worker at West Rocks actually works with families, so please reach out to her, and if not, we do have in-district common council and Board of Ed members who can reach out to you, there are, there are ways to support you, so please let us know, keep us in the loop.
We will make sure to work with the school to address it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, James.
Lynn Daniels, you have the floor, please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, my name is Lynn Daniels, I'm, I live on McAllister Avenue in the Brookside Elementary area. I have a second grader and a child still in daycare who, I'm sorry you may hear in the background, I'm trying to put him to bed, like I'm sure lots of other parents are trying to do right now. I was very pleased to hear so many other people calling in with a lot of the same thoughts that I had, so I just want to echo them again to let you know that these are commonly held opinions that while I have lots of concerns about the city, I do really want you to prioritize our school district. And I specifically really appreciated, I believe her name is Dr. Moore's, comments about that our school seems to be top-heavy in administration. I found that information myself through Norwalk Hour article that anyone can find for themselves from January tenth, twenty twenty-five, listing that more than twenty-five employees are earning more than two hundred thousand dollars. And beyond that, there are then dozens more that you have to scroll down through of administration positions that, again, we don't know what they are, you have to scroll pages and pages before you reach the teachers and the chief and the paraeducators who are paid, as far as I can tell, something like in the range of thirty thousand dollars, so we're having these, eliminating the positions of the paraeducators and the music teachers, and instead saving the administration positions earning well over a hundred thousand dollars a year for which we could get six paraeducators who spend their day actually face-to-face with our children, affecting them, they're the ones teaching them how to socialize, how to be good people, how, just, they're affecting them so much, that's important. And then also, I appreciated and want to echo the input of the environmental expert that, please don't direct any part of our town budget towards turf projects in the town. They are so bad for the health of people, the health of our environment, and hugely expensive. And, but however, I do appreciate the town's recent efforts to add sidewalks, especially in the Brookside area where I am, I don't know if it's all throughout the town, but in our area, it's really improved access to the schools and just our families' enjoyment of our neighborhood, so thank you for that.
Hi, my name is Mary Dyes, and I'm from Nineteen Oakfield Road. And I just wanted to make note of, just like people infrastructure, like the last speaker just said, appreciate sidewalks being built and just making sure people are safe because there's been a huge influx of people in the past five years, I've lived here for thirty-plus years, and i- it's fine to have the influx of people, but I have some friends in the fire department, and they said, you know, since that we've added all of these apartment buildings, they haven't added staff to the fire department, which is like kind of scary from my perspective. I know that they have the latest technology, which is excellent, but just making sure there's staff there to use the technology. It's something like that, or I know that I got notifications saying that our water is going to be brown more often because they're flushing the system because there's so many people using it. So I just want to make a note that maybe we evaluate, like, our infrastructure and we're able to handle all of the people that we've invited here. It's fine if you want to build buildings and that's, like, build more apartment buildings, that's fine. Maybe, I don't know if that's many people as apartment buildings or even, I don't know if people are filling the apartments, but we are seeing the effects from even just a few years ago from pre-COVID, and I just like to make sure that we're keeping citizens safe as we continue to grow.
Thank you. James? While the online people are speaking, anybody else wishes to address the chamber that's fine, come on down and sign up?
Dal Anarana?
Hi, yes, my name is Dalinera, and I have been living in Norwalk for over twenty years. I have a fifteen-year-old son who attends P-Tech and a daughter who attends Wolf Pit, she's seven. I have to say, the change has been drastic, right, over the years, as, you know, things do change. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I believe our school budget could look like.
Hold on, let's see here. Yes. Losing you, James? James. Next speaker is Amanda. James, if we can get Amanda on it?
Amanda?
Hi, everyone, this is Amanda Fraser from twenty-three Sachem Street here in Norwalk. I have a daughter who's in second grade who attends Kendall College and Career Academy. I am the current PTA president and a current SGC member as well. I want to echo all of the messages that the parents already today have shared and that there's a lot for students, teachers, and parents to be worried about in this world right now, and the chaos and dysfunction of, you know, the budgeting and all of these things should not be an additional worry that we need to bear. My school has eighty percent MLM learners, and we have a high special education group as well, and we're constantly having to fight for the resources that we need for our school. You know, Norwalk prides itself on being a diverse, robust city, and I think if that really is a priority for us, we need to ensure that our schools feel that way and are supported to continue to grow our city in those ways. I'm also, all the time advocating for more sidewalks and safety measures around our school. I live literally right down the street from the school, but there's no safe way for me to walk my daughter less than a block away. There, we have to walk within the street, and because of the congestion that happens around school times, it's very dangerous on that corner to even walk her down there without fear of one of us being hit by a car. We, it's, the school's also on a very tight turn in the road, and we have no flashers anymore. So I'm so thankful for our amazing crossing guard who is just a lovely man. But I really would love to see more happening there to ensure that our students are safe if we want to continue to advocate for students and, and parents to walk and bike to school, we have to create a safe way for them to do that. So I really urge you all to, you know, learn from this last year, learn from last week, really hear all of us, what we're saying, and that we need you all to do better, and we need that transparency, we are eager to see more consistency in our schools, and I thank you for, for the time.
Thank you. James, Xena King?
Xena King?
Hi, this is Xena King, I live on Nursery Court. I know several parents from Silvermine spoken earlier today, and we've spoken at previous meetings as well for the same thing, asking for clarity around the program, asking for transparency. In regards to clarity, we are, Silvermine is still billed as a dual-language program, but for students in the fourth and fifth grade, that is only a name. The program has effectively been gutted, it's been diluted, it's been morphed, I don't know however you want to describe it. And one thing I find interesting is that for two years I've asked to get a look at the school budget or any semblance of a document that explains what the budget looks like, nothing has ever been provided. So I just wanted to ask tonight for something simple. Maybe can someone document the process for parents actually have a budget, documents for their school? Instead of hearing things that, hey, the budget is only viewable by one person in the building and not able to be shared with anyone else. I think why I'm asking for this is that if parents had seen the budget that I'm sure exactly had already and dismantled our program, if we'd seen how the budget had been allocated, we could have vouched for it before the school year started. We're now in the midst of a new year, and there is nothing parents can do, there's no dialogue that's been really shared. I think the muddled communications that has been shared has not provided transparency or clarity. So I'm asking for something, I think, in the scope of everything that's been discussed today is very, very simple and table stakes. Can someone please share how these budgets for schools are allocated? And if the, if the district decides to do something like dismantle a very stressful program at a school, can something be shared and something be done that parents aren't left in the dark in the midst of all this? Thank you for the time, and I'm glad we're having this one-way dialogue about.
Thank you. James, I think Dalmanira's back, or?
Dalanera?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, we can.
Hi, I am so sorry, I was in my car, but thank you so much for the opportunity to be here, my name is Dalanera. I have a fifteen-year-old son, I promise this will be brief, everyone. He attends P-Tech, my daughter is seven years old, she attends Wolf Pit Elementary School, School of the Arts, and I believe our school budget should reflect what truly supports our students, teachers, and families. Every dollar matters, right, and I hope we can work together to make sure it's invested wisely in what benefits our, our school community the most. And so that's, I'm going to keep it very short. Also, our students, you know, they have enough worry on their, on their mind, right? And now they have to worry about paying for lunch. A lot of mothers are single, single parents, and, you know, they don't have the means to pay for lunch and all of these things, and I know that there are extra resources that they can apply for, however, sometimes they just don't get approved, right? And so I'm one of those parents, I'm a single mother with two children, I've been living in, in the Norwalk for about twenty-one years, and I feel that, you know, we have to ensure that our students aren't having to worry about what they're going to eat. Also, for the students who walk, who are walkers, their parents are at home and they have to walk, there should be more space for the, for kids, you know, and the sidewalks. And so that's really all I have to say, I thank you, everyone who attended today and took the time to hear everyone out, thank you so much, you guys.
Thank you.
Hello, members of the council and CFOs, et cetera, Superintendent. I'm Tanner Thompson, I live at sixteen Hillside Place. I am affiliated with Sustainable Streets Norwalk, we advocate for fiscal and environmental sustainability as well as affordability and public health through decreasing Norwalk's reliance on cars and advocating for walkability, bikeability, public transit, and more housing in parts of town where those modes are possible. We've spent the last several weeks nailing down a policy platform for the year twenty twenty-five, and several of those include asks to the city to spend money on certain things, and I'm going to go through those right now. In the operating budget, we have two asks. One is to hire a dedicated bike pedestrian program manager within T M P. This is somebody who could oversee the city's, like, who would have as their primary priority to oversee biking and walking infrastructure, for example, sidewalk construction, which is relevant to our schools. But one of the things that I identified during my five years on the Bike Walk Commission is that we, our current bicycle pedestrian master plan is from the year twenty twelve. We've made a lot of progress towards it, but our priorities and the nature of our city has changed a lot, and best practices have changed a lot as well in those intervening thirteen years, and it's my opinion and the opinion of Sustainable Streets that it is time for a new bicycle pedestrian master plan. So my first ask is for a dedicated employee within T M P to oversee that. a dedicated employee within TMP to oversee that, um, both the creation of that plan and the implementation of that plan. The other ask for operating budget is to fund more street activation events, um, like the Sono Saturday Market. Um, also the Bike Walk Commission for two years running spearheaded with some help from the city from Parks and Park, from Wreck and Parks and from TMP, the Calf pasture beach open street event, which was a huge success last year, um, but we didn't have enough bandwidth on the Bike Walk Commission um, or within volunteers writ large to continue seeing that through. And so we would need a little bit more support from the city if we wanted that to happen. But, um, last year we partnered with Norwalk Public Schools to do that and we had hundreds and hundreds of families of people, mostly families of kids who attended and it was a great time and we'd love to see the city doing more of those types of events. On the capital side, I have a few requests. The, the first one is also within TMP to create that Bike Walk Master Plan. Potentially that's something that a dedicated employee could do on their own, but potentially we may also want to fund that through hiring a consultant, which I think would go through capital budget. Um, the second one is the NRVT North of Broad Street. This is something that the, uh, the TMP is already working on and I think they have some funding for this, but I would call on the city to continue to fund that um, so that we can plug that gap between Norwalk and Wilton. There's a lot of people who commute from Norwalk to Wilton and we'd love to have those people commuting not in a car, um, to alleviate congestion for public health, et cetera.
Thirty seconds remaining?
Yes. Number three is to start the design of the shared use path on Connecticut Avenue. This is one of the recommendations that came from the Connecticut, uh, the, the Route One corridor study that West Park did. Um, they recommended, or I think they're about to recommend their final results. A shared use path on part of Connecticut Avenue, but it doesn't really serve the destinations that everybody wants to get to on Connecticut Avenue. We would, uh, encourage the city to extend that vision for that shared use path all the way down Connecticut Avenue so that it serves all of our shops, including the brand new ones that we just brought to town. Um, so all stop there. We have more. We're going to be releasing a series of op-eds with these different policy platforms, but those are the high level ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanner.
Hi, everyone. My name is Elise Williams and I live on twenty-four Mid Rock Strive. Um, you've probably all seen my face quite a few times. I feel like I'm back to the start where I was not planning on speaking tonight, so I have nothing written. So please excuse me. You know, tonight I really came here with the expectation of just listening and kind of taking all the information in and formulating some of the questions and things I want to talk about in the future. But after being here, I realized, you know, this is really an opportunity for us to start the year correct. Um, I have a daughter who's a second grader at Wolf Pit and I have a son who is a special needs at Cranberry. He's four in the preschool program. And I can't say enough about the teachers, the staff. You know, everyone within the buildings, they've been just absolutely amazing. Like Norwalk has blown me away with the schools. But going through this process with the budget, being a part of everything, starting from the roundtables last year, it's been disappointing. It's been frustrating. And I've wanted to understand more, to learn more, to have more suggestions, but no matter how many meetings I came to, no matter how many times I spoke, I felt like my voice really was not heard. Um, so some of the things I noticed last year, we went through the budget process, you know, we'd go through all those meetings where we would say, okay, here's the amount where we originally budgeted. Here's where things are maybe falling short or we need to make changes. But every time I would go back to the website, there would never be an updated budget until the very end. So is that something we can do, like following through? Can we see updated numbers that we can follow? And, you know, more consistency with those because I noticed like the PDF in the beginning of the year was not the same when we received it. At the end of the year, it was very hard to try to find like line by line. Special ed program. We closed down NECC. We were told that this was for, it was not for budget reasons. It was to get more typical kids within the classrooms or whatever else, right? But now I'm seeing Wolf Pit and I'm seeing they have five, six kids in a class with two teachers and a parent professional. And it makes me wonder like, how is this impacting the budget? Like, are we expecting a lot more kids in those classes? Or are we now having really small classes that just don't again, maybe make as much sense? Or like, I've kind of spoken and I heard this mentioned tonight, the busing for the choice programs. My daughter is at a choice school. I absolutely love it. But how is a bus with eight kids on it? How is that efficient? What else can we do? Um, what, how can we work around? And I know I've been told like, oh, we have to legally give buses, but there has to be just more that we can do. And I know it's really hard when the same people are always doing all the research and trying to figure everything out. So involve us, involve the public, give us more line by line information. Let us get involved and let us try to come up with more ideas and collaboratively work together because I think a lot of us, you know, I have a finance and accounting background. Like I would love to work with people. I've joined the finance meeting. You know, I'm following, I'm getting the list served where I follow the meetings I join and it's very high level. And another thing, didn't we get six and a half million dollars last year? And I keep hearing four and a half is what will be in the budget for next year. Where is the other two million? We saw the PDF tonight and it said, you know, a couple of things that would be challenges for this year, but it was just like a quick, brief point and it didn't give any details. What, how, how impactful are those? Like what are the, what's the plan to attack that? If we're going to be involved in this process, we need more information. So I just urge everyone going forward. Just share the information with us. Let us be involved. Thank you.
All right. My name is Sarah. I already spoke, but, um, my colleague, Benina, who is also a Norwalk parent, just texted me to see if she could sign this because she too is trying to put her kids to bed. It's, you know, really hard for working parents and Norwalk is made up of working parents. But anyway, she says, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd like clarification on the emergency funding from last year's shortfall. Specifically, where will those funds be allocated this year? Can you outline what priorities or programs they will support and how those decisions are being made to ensure transparency and accountability? Secondly, I urge you to stay away from cutting school programs. The progress we are seeing in our test scores is not by chance. It's because of the investments in funding and the talented educators we have here in Norwalk. Reducing programs now would undermine the very foundation of our students' successes. Please continue to prioritize education and protect the resources that are driving these positive results. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, that was the last speaker. Any pardons? So we just, okay. We have one more speaker.
Maria Zambrano? Maria Zambrano, you have the floor. Please unmute yourself.
Well, with that, uh, if there's anybody on the panel that wishes to make a comment or have a statement. I'll recognize whoever wishes to speak. And with Mr. Frayer.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that this is very, very insightful. Some of the comments we heard tonight were really very good, kind of eye-opening. And I think there's a lot of areas that we can we can focus on going forward, especially as we go through the building and the budget. But I also like to think about it as being very constructive. Um, not tearing anybody down, how we can improve on some of the things that we heard tonight. So I look forward to working hard on this budget to come through. I also think that there's, um, we probably need to explain a little bit more to some of the public out here. What is behind some of these numbers? I, I hear quite a bit. And I think is there, there are some things that, um, we probably take to granted when we, uh, talk about things in the budget. So I think part of some of these meetings periodically, we should take a step back, focus on what those, those specific things are. Like somebody's mentioned just a couple of minutes ago that, uh, shortfall here or there, why is that? Why have the numbers changed? So I think there's a little bit of work we could do. So I think this is very fruitful.
Agree. And I want to thank everybody for coming out. I want to thank those people who were calling in from home. Um, I think this was a, a really great meeting where we got some good ideas and I thank everybody for their patience and also for, uh, their, uh, big heart. So appreciate all of that you've done and we'll, we'll for a jerk. We'll jerk. At, uh, eight forty.